Evening and welcome to the regular town board meeting for the town of customer for June the 10th. We will call the meeting to order and. Uh, the payment of bills, the general fund expended seventy six thousand five hundred and sixteen dollars and two cents. Anyway, expended one hundred and ninety five thousand nine hundred and fifty eight dollars and forty four cents, water twenty two thousand two hundred and twenty seven dollars and forty eight cents. Sewer fifty five thousand one hundred and six dollars and twelve cents, the lighting district three thousand four hundred and forty seven dollars and four cents. Capital General seventeen thousand six hundred and eighty dollars, capital water seventy two hundred and fifty three dollars for a total of three hundred and seventy eight thousand one hundred and eighty eight dollars and ten cents. Uh, the highway was chips funding in the paving. That's the elevated amount there and I believe that pass and Greg did the bill. Any issues, comments, buttons, concerns? I would accept the motion to pay the bills as presented. Um, I have a motion, a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? I opposed. Our division reports, uh, those again that are not read here on the meeting will be posted online. We will start with two point four, the water and sewer committee, Kevin.
Well, the exciting news is that they've got a generator, a new generator sewer plant. Um, and that, um, Craig attended a water conference. Uh, learned a lot of things, but also was sort of brought back a warning that PFAS testing, which is an EPA mandate. Uh, may cost up to fifteen thousand dollars a year. So it's just something to think about when we're doing the budgeting. PFAS is, it's, it's clothes that are fire retardant. Uh, I've been around for years and when you wash your fire retardant clothes. A little tiny chemicals get into the water supply and it takes the tiniest amount to sort of trigger some sort of violation. So, um. Uh, the EPA is now mandating a lot of water systems, uh, test for it and, uh, the testing alone be like fifteen grand a year, so.
Anything else, Kevin? That's, uh, headlines. Any questions, Kevin, from the board? Kelly online for the youth report?
Yeah.
Okay. We will go to two point seven parks and public spacious committee.
Um, lots of details, uh, written down in the report. Really good month for, in my opinion, uh, we had trees planted. We, uh, improved the picnic tables and created a new picnic area over on the sports court side. Uh, we have now dedication signs and new regulations, uh, and conduct suggestion signs. And, uh, we had a wonderful dedication ceremony to, uh, dedicate the ball field to free ball and firefighters. And the, uh, sports court for a young man who had passed away in his high school class donated money. To help us originally create the sports court. We had over a hundred and sixty people at the park on Saturday afternoon. Uh, representatives from each family spoke and, uh. It was really a wonderful sense of community and a big, uh, shout out to Coach Bob for helping make sure that, that, that all moved forward and providing the infrastructure. Shout out to, uh, Doreen Kraus for reminding us about some of the things that had been promised in the past that have now been made right. And, uh, a wonderful subcommittee who did a lot of heavy lifting to get the dedication ceremony in order. And the highway department who has done a lot of work down in the park and pleased to announce that as far as I know. Uh, the job core portion of the pavilion build is complete. So again, lots of progress.
Carrotton is also.
Yes. Thank you for reminding me.
And the fire department.
Yep.
She left all the chairs there.
We had a fire truck and they helped set up and tear down. And baked.
And the pickleball thing was painted?
Yes, Sean Harrington, um, did the, uh, boundaries for pickleball and basketball. And there is a net that we got through Grant, I believe, did we? Yep. So, uh, exciting things happening in the park.
Any questions for Greg?
Uh, oh, may I go back and say one more thing? Um, we do have a recommended fee structure for the pavilions. Um, fifty dollars for Tufton residents and nonprofits, one hundred dollars for non-residents and a hundred dollar deposit. To be returned upon successful checkout of the pavilion. So those are the rules we're looking at right now. And when we are ready to accept bookings for the pavilion, those will be posted in the area. Oh, and we have, um, a.
This is on the agenda for approval.
Okay, we will be talking about, uh, tasks related to Little Lake Erie later in meeting.
Uh, Kathleen's on a line issue. So we will go right into.
The building committee. I, I just wanted to say for parking, we didn't meet, but, uh, Don says after probably the paving of the municipal, you know, municipal bank lot or whatever you want to call it, after the fourth.
Okay.
Go to UDC.
Absolutely.
Um, they're coming up with their technical, the tag grants. Do you have an idea what we might apply for this year?
I seem to think you do.
Oh, actually, I actually am not coming up with anything right away, which is astounding me. So I thought I'd ask. All right, I have a month to think.
Tag, you're in.
Okay. I thought maybe something was on your mind that I didn't know about.
Not yet, but I'll work on that. Uh, building committee.
I had a good meeting. We are continuing to look at the different projects, uh, related to this building that we would like to move forward. Uh, getting information, asking for bids and, uh, reviewing priorities. So more to come.
I'm actually meeting, I think, tomorrow or Thursday with somebody for the, um.
Water. Uh, which brings us into the conservation advisory council.
Yes, the natural resources inventory and the open space and recreation plan are nearing completion. That's a two-year project nearing completion and members of the CAC met today to review the final draft. But it's a big project, so we will be meeting again and we expect the final version to be available for the public by August. So this is really very exciting. Um, I think, does any county have a open space plan, do you know?
I don't know the answer to that. I mean, I'm thinking Forestburg perhaps, but I don't know.
Anyway, can't be better than ours. Okay, Brad.
Yes, please.
Um, the northern borders grant, we're waiting to hear about that. I have a good feeling about it, but it doesn't mean anything. And we should hear from, uh, you get that information by the end of the month and that's for one million dollars for the water, uh, project for the. Yeah, for the water project. And then USDA, uh, Delaware engineering will work on the USDA ground well number three. And if awarded, that could mean between five hundred and one, five hundred thousand and one million. The UDC will have to, that's why the open space has to be done by August because we have to turn that into UDC. Natural fishing wildlife, what do you want to do about that? Um, Ben, if you want me to meet with you and.
You know, um, we could be either tomorrow or Saturday or Monday and.
And, um, we, uh, so when eighty graph was approved for fifteen thousand, I had spoken to, yeah. And I started work on that, uh, trying to get the Meadows sign, uh, made, we're going to have, what is the metal all about? Sign made it for Kirk's Road. We, um, though, platters, um, working on that and we have to get some trees, et cetera. That's it.
Do we have any other reports before we move into old business? Three point one and all business, the planning board, we still are one alternate, uh, vacancy on the planning board. So I am looking for authorization for the clerk to publish a notice, uh, for step applicants for that position. Any discussion on that or questions?
How many people are on the planning board?
Uh, seven. Alternates can, they're set by local law, correct? So I, I don't, we checked, I don't think we have two. We really have one. What would we need to do? Would we need to amend the local law if we wanted to have two?
Yeah.
Okay.
If it doesn't already provide the two, then we have.
Okay, that's something we can look at down the road.
Yeah, whatever you would.
Not gonna happen now, but, um. So I would make a motion to authorize the town per to publish a notice, um, for applicants to the planning board alternate position and to be. Really to receive them by June or July is going to be kind of quick, isn't it? So have for August.
So I'll second that.
All in favor? I oppose. Is there any other old business that we've got other than the planning board that I have missed? You know, Florida is coming tonight. I needed it because I didn't expect the meeting to move along as it has. I told them not to worry about, uh, would he be five forty-one Irish Town Road?
I think he is.
Okay, good. I didn't want to be farther ahead and not be here because I told them it could wait for a while. Uh, new business hiring for Little Lake Erie vegetation maintenance, um, and this is what Greg was talking about that's coming out of the parks committee. And this would be as needed. As by the parks committee chairperson. So it could be zero hours, it could be five or 10 hours, um. Any questions from the board on that? So I would make the motion to hire Adam Englandson at a pay rate of twenty-five dollars an hour for the purpose of conducting vegetation maintenance at Little Lake Erie. With hours to be scheduled as needed and approved by the parks committee slash chairperson.
I'm second on.
Any other further discussion on that?
We don't need a not to exceed kind of thing to read or.
No, because the chairperson would not write out.
Yeah, right.
And we can blame him if it goes to exceed. It's always good.
Drinks for everybody.
All in favor? I oppose. On the standard workday and this is for, uh, our elected officials. And this is for the purpose of the New York State, uh, local retirement system. Does the board have any questions regarding this? Yeah, I would accept a motion four point two, the standard workday as presented. I will make the motion to accept it as presented.
I'll second.
Further discussion? All in favor? I, I opposed. Uh, four point three is road closure for the thirty-fourth annual River Fest. And this would be on Sunday, July twenty-seventh from seven AM to six thirty PM. Um, it is continued to find the coordination with the sheriff's office in the volunteer fire department and any other applicable agencies to ensure public safety. I would have to think after thirty-four years with this instance, they've kind of got it down. So I would accept a motion for the authorization of the road closure for the thirty-fourth annual River Fest. Some in a second, second. Further discussion? All in favor? I, I opposed. Four point four, um, get ahead of ourselves and authorize the closure of Main Street for the Independence Day Parade, which will be on July fourth. And by the volunteer fire department.
Need a motion?
I do.
I'll move that.
In a second.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor? I oppose. Um, is there any other new business that we have?
Um, Cass reminded me, I forgot to mention during parks, uh, several families came up to me during, uh, the dedication ceremony. And we're discussing making donations to the park. So we may have a couple of other, uh, things that we are able to do this year. And, uh, the family of the late Ed and Doreen Kraus has, uh, offered to donate a bench and some trees on the sports court side of the park. And we're going to be around, so, uh, want to tell them how much we appreciate.
Thank you. We are going to be doing an executive session this evening, um, who enter an executive session for the purpose of discussion of purchase and sale of real property. So before we do that. And the realization that some people might not be here before we get back. We will move public comment before four point six and I will open the public comment first to Zoom. Okay, I see the powels.
I'm sorry, uh, can you hear me? I, I just needed the date of River Fest. We missed it.
Uh, River Fest is going to be on Sunday, July twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seven, thank you.
Thank you.
That was easy public comment. Okay, I will move to the floor and then back to the. I'll move to the floor and then back to Zoom if somebody from Zoom needs to get back in. Um, I'm going to go with the lady in the back first.
Um, I said to you, is Peter here from Darkin Side here? Um, I had a very nice conversation with him.
Yeah, come on, come on up, come on up this way so we, you can be heard by your. No, no.
Even though I have a very loud voice at home. Wait, is that you? Are you Alan? Hi Alex, no worries, nice to meet you. So Peter and I, and then is Jim here?
No.
No, he's not. Okay, so we have some concerns about, I live on Smith Hughes, but I can hear. Um, dog situation, which is across the street from Alex. And Peter has visited that place three times. And we are just wondering, what is the next procedure? Because we are all very concerned for two reasons. The noise is incredible. It's eleven dogs. He supposedly, um, the owner of this property is supposedly breeding the dogs. Um, he's on possibly maybe a half acre in one part and then I guess he has some additional land. But I think, um, just because we love it up here so much, I would rather listen to the birds. Than to dogs going off on all hours and parts of the day, the morning and plus we're not so sure because I can't trespass, obviously. But Peter has been there. We're also concerned for the safety of the animals and I'd say that's about it. So that's that.
Um, I, I know public comment is not normally a back and forth and, and I don't encourage back and forth from the board with the public comment, but I will, uh. Just so that there's some clarity to this, that myself and a code enforcement officer were down at that property today, did make contact with the owner regarding, uh, some issues that we're asking for, so.
Okay.
Peter.
Uh, I just. Would like to request, uh, animal control education table again this year at River Fest, if possible. Thank you.
You're willing to do.
What do you need for that, Peter?
Uh, I think it's fifty dollars a table. I mean, personal contact, the organizers and. Right checking.
Okay, you had some things you were giving away or.
Yeah, we still have money. Yeah, money, yeah.
Oh, that little dog thing.
Yeah, we'll have to do all that all over again.
Okay.
We, we don't need to, we can make a motion just to clarify. Yeah, I would make a motion to authorize the animal patrol officer.
And don't forget, last year we raised over three hundred dollars and it went right back into our budget.
I would make a motion to authorize the animal patrol officer, uh, to attend the River Fest on Sunday, July twenty-seventh. And to authorize the payment of the fees for the display table.
Thank you. I'll second that.
All in favor? I oppose. Um, yes.
I know we already went over the topic of the dogs. I'm here for the same reason and I think there's probably like five neighbors on Zoom who are also here for that. I sent everyone here a letter, um, and I'm sure you've read it, so I don't know if I need to read it again. Now we have, knowing we have limited time. It has over like twenty-three videos of the non-stop barking, um, and the pencil queue. So I just wanted to like share that. Probably like our whole street is on this call and we're here. So I know that you said that people are looking into it, um. But we'll just, I guess, keep chatting to hopefully figure out like how we can solve this. Um, because we've been at it since March and haven't been able to figure that out yet. So that's it.
Okay, thank you. Yes, please. Thank you. Yeah.
And thanks for listening. Um, we've all seen the weekend in identity commercial living quarters mixed with or adjacent to the single family homes. These housing situations produce large quantities of garbage and this garbage spreads from men and it's a nuisance bear training. There's an obvious health issue. Uh, we are request that law ordinance be written that requires household waste be stored on local wildlife. Requirements could include stuff like fence or cage dumpster sites with all metal dumpsters. And then, and it's an assignment of responsibility to clean up, clean up of the garbage spread on other properties. Um, thank you for your attention.
You having an issue?
Yeah, well, it seems like every year, uh, it's getting worse with the bear and critters all over the place now that. Didn't used to come there. They're, they're sort of being trained by, I guess, the. The smell and everything else and those dumpsters are not secure. I mean. Most, most commercial places I've ever seen usually have a fence around their dumpster site. Something to keep, you know, raccoons and everything else from getting in there. And that's essentially what it is. There's some pictures and basically.
Got a question. As I understood it, that the original site plan for that apartment complex had a fence.
Oh, there was a lot, a lot of things in the original site plan, but it was short because, uh. A decision was made that it was in substantial components, which, and, and a lot of it never happened. The guy currently has, uh, it's dumpster right in the middle of the paper road and there's cars parked out there as well. So, you know, there's, there's no protection for it and there isn't even any lights on it. So to sort of discourage anything. And it's been spreading garbage and there's a couple of other instances around the area where.
And have you, have you dealt directly with the landlord?
Yes.
The owner of most of. So have you documented this, uh, complaints to the board or to the town?
Well, um, we did complain directly. Well, yes, actually there was. I made complaint with the coding inspector.
Okay.
And I also contacted the, the owner of the building a number of times. And, you know, said, oh, it's not cool, you know, like there's garbage all over the place and, and on my property because the bear drags it, you know. It, it's not going to sit out in the mid, so the drags it to cover and it's, you know. They, they, they make minor attempts bringing up the bulk of it, but. Multiple occasions have led to a, a lot of litter being left.
No, I want to say that they never took a parking lot into the people. So there was supposed to give twenty-four call parking lot and they can barely fit ten cars in that area. That's why they flock across the road. That's why the dumpsters are in the middle of.
That's a public road?
No, it's a private road. Yeah.
Thank you. Yes, start. Sounds like you're an opera singer.
That kid that has a daughter. He's the magic child.
My tip shows here, um, I'm going over some basic comments that I've been making for the past year and a half. Uh, of items that are still unresolved and unattended to. Um, the first one I'd like to raise this evening is the ongoing problem of no agendas being available prior to the meetings. And when they are available, they are in a skeletal form, much less than what's shown on the flash. Uh. Display on, on the video here. And it's very difficult to keep up with some of the topics and what's being said when you don't have something in front of you that you can follow that makes any sense. So I really don't understand why would this be presented and having the agendas at least a little bit more fleshed out. Ready to be picked up, why that cannot be put online in a timely fashion. So people will know what exactly they are dealing with. And if they have any problems with that specific subject, they can do a little investigative work before they come. Uh. I also think that this is really a responsibility of the board to keep the public informed of what is going on besides. They, when they manage to walk through the door, this is a responsibility of good government. Keep people advised of what the government is doing and what their plans are and a good filled out agenda would do this. Um, for example, uh, we still have the failure to repair and restore the ADA, um, door in the back of this building. It's not posted like it's supposed to be. It doesn't have a, an ADA, uh, door for someone that might have a handicap. And if it's not posted, then it's not, it's not approved. That is dangerous situation. It could be a lawsuit and I really think this has been going on for over a year and a half. Somebody should look into that. Uh, you mentioned also that, uh. The, um, River Fest is going to have their celebration and I guess on the fourth of July or will these people here? Maybe not as long as when the River Fest is going on, but I have to ask again. Narrowsburg has no public toilets on Main Street where the majority of the people come. And I don't know why this is such a problem. I've just found out that in Philadelphia, there was a complaint made and they're now looking into putting. Public toilets on the streets around Philadelphia. Now, I know we're not Philadelphia, but everybody has needs and they should be available in a civilized. Situation that people who need bathroom facilities don't have to depend on who's open on what day that they can barge in and use. So I, again, I don't, I don't understand. What is the problem with this? When we have two, count them, portable toilets down in the park. And nothing for the entire part of Main Street where. For the entire part of Main Street where the majority of tourists are going to be going. This does not make sense. This is not that expensive to do, and if you get a decent provider, they are a very nice convenience, especially for people with young children. So I again, please. This is something that should be looked at and funded by the town as just a normal. Accommodation to the tourists and the people that you invite into the town to spend their money. Thank you.
Is there anybody else on Zoom?
So Martin is here.
Okay.
Does Martin want to say anything?
Yes, I'm sorry. I'm a little late to the meeting. I I was uh.
We were running early. I was waiting for you.
Okay, I appreciate that. Uh I didn't get to hear what my neighbor said about the situation here on Irish Town Road, but. Uh we've talked a lot about it. We talked about it today and Ben, we spoke about it in the office today. I just really hope that the the town code enforcement can look into the situation there. As well as animal control and and get this property owner into some semblance of compliance. We. Have been very live and let live our twenty years cohabitating with this neighbor on this road, and we've never. Lodge any complaint, even though the property has always been. Shall we say questionable, but now it seems that there is. Someone living in a camper in the driveway, there's dogs everywhere, there's just junk everywhere. Uh it just seems like unsafe living conditions and uh. Cars parked on the road, making it hard for the rest of us to get by. And then also the the dumping on the adjacent property that he does not own. Um seems problematic as well. So we just. Really hope that that y'all can look into it and. Get some resolution for us because it's really affecting the quiet enjoyment of the rest of us. To uh live here on Irish Town Road.
And I did mention before you came in um. That the code enforcement officer myself did go down there today and we we made contact with the family members um. We'll see if the. New property owner gets hold of us or not.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Anybody else on Zoom?
If if I may. Can you guys hear me? All right, I'm I'm also an Irish Town Road resident and I won't belabor the point, but I just want to to make clear that it's more than just a couple of people who are um. Who are affected by this. We've been woken up by the dogs and and hear them constantly, and I just want to make sure you guys understand that there there are a a lot of voices. Uh and other people on this road who are affected by this too.
Thank you. Anyone else on the Zoom? Yes, Kathleen.
No, I would just like to thank the Parks Committee, the Town Board. The Highway Department and so many volunteers for all the hard work that helped make the dedication possible on Saturday. To see the turnout we had brought such joy to our families. And to know the lives of Bruce Denny, Paul Brock, Jay Laria, and my brother Brett will live on for future generations. And especially to be able to enjoy all the work. That was done in order to make more future memories. Our families had such amazing support from our community that that it made us feel more like one big family. Genuinely cared and supported one another, and this event. Has helped revive that feeling. Thank you again.
That was fun.
It was a beautiful event.
Thank you. Left word in trouble. Is there any other comments from the floor? If not, I am going to make a motion to enter executive session. For the uh discussion of purchase and sale of real property.
I was, I just wanted the last speaker on Zoom, did you get a name? Just for your.
Steve.
For your sake, you know, for your.
I am using that name.
Okay. A second? Yeah, second. All in favor?
I I.
Folks, thank you for attending. We're gonna enter an executive session.
Thank you, everyone.
Out of executives. It's important.
Okay, is there any other? Not before the board. If not, I will make a motion to adjourn.
I think we should welcome Bruce to the world event.
Okay, um. I I motion. But we don't want to do that. You don't want to do that in minutes.
I don't know. I don't care either way. We're not gonna put anything in the minutes right now.
The um.
You're recording.
Record. That's fine. Yes, here here's the question. The question is that we've 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 been. To individuals who departed from the brewery business to release them from their guarantee, I believe. We've now been presented with a with a with a proposal that the two people that. Entered into the business in place of them would substitute and they would join into the guarantee along with the. With the other and and Jacob, who was also a lawyer. Me, one of the principals of the brewery, has presented to us, me anyway, a proposed form of guarantee. Honestly, I have not really looked at it closely. I'm gonna look at it to see how it compares. I suspect that it's. More more favorable to them and less favorable to us than the one that they've signed before. My inclination is that. I it's a policy decision for you if you want to release the one couple and substitute in the other couple. My inclination is everybody should be bound by the same guarantee agreement, and I don't know why.
We already significantly compromised on that guarantee to the terms we had suggested.
And and I don't know why we would do anything but say, sure, you can sign the same form of guarantee that the two of you guys, the board of guys originally signed.
Absolutely.
So we will leave that for Ken to review until next.
But but I mean, are you guys open to the concept of letting go the one couple in favor of taking in the other couple?
Sure, same terms, though. I mean, because the guarantee we agreed to it in my memory was about twenty-five percent of what a standard commercial lease normally is.
Yeah, yeah.
So to further compromise makes no sense when we've already been more than generous. I'll go to the brewery right now.
So.
With Adams then?
I think the board is. The ball that comes from you.
That's right. Just wanted to get, because I don't want to spend a lot of time hacking through the stupid agreement if you're not gonna be, if you guys are gonna say, yeah, I don't care. We're keeping the original two guys and working out between yourself.
Thanks for adding. We got six. Uh if there's no further business, a motion to adjourn. I'll move. Second, I have.
I second. All in favor? I.
Good night.
So you're all done, Bruce?
That's okay.